I figured if I started.
Is there a microphone?
No, I'm restarting it for the. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. I appreciate everybody being here tonight. It's always kind of one of my favorite evenings when we get to honor some people in our community. I would like to call this meeting to order, remind everybody to make sure your phones are on silent or vibrate. I would ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keith?
Our Father in Heaven, we humbly come before thee this evening to thank thee for thy many blessings in our lives. We're grateful to live in a free country where we're able to work together to, within our community, to meet the needs of our citizens and of the, and our visitors, and we pray for thy Spirit to bless us this night and the decisions and discussions that we'll have. We pray for inspiration and guidance in these things. We're thankful for the opportunity to recognize the law enforcement and first responders and that respond and work in our community. We're thankful for their sacrifices. We're thankful for their willingness to serve in the manner that they are. We pray for thy blessings of peace and strength and, and protection to be with them at all times. We humbly pray for moisture upon our mountain. We need the snow and the rain so badly. We pray for a blessing and protection upon our community, and we also hope that our community and property owners will recognize that there are things that they need to do at their own homes to be able to preserve their homes, and we ask for thy blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Keith. Item B on our agenda is Call to the Public. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Council action on items brought up in Call to the Public is limited by the open meeting law. Council may direct staff to study the matter for future agenda item. Items on the agenda will not be heard during Call to the Public, and individuals are limited to three minutes. I have no request for Call to the Public. Okay, we'll then move on to item C, which is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the town council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda, and items removed are considered in their normal sequence unless called out of sequence. We've got two items on our consent agenda. Are there any questions? Seeing none, Vice Mayor?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. And all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D is business before the council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item either before or after our council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 on our agenda tonight is recognition of High School Teacher of the Year, Sarah Bromke. I'm going to call up the VFW Post 2364 and... Who's going to? Come on. Welcome. Thank you, guys, all for being here.
Thank you for having us. I'd like to start off by maybe just introducing some of the members of the folks that are here this evening. We have John Beeler, who was the chairman of Voice of Democracy's End Line, because we're all in stuff. We have Al Jones, that's Al. Ray Love, sitting about here. And if I did this last name right, we all know we love. Ed Sazuka, is that close? All right, good, all right. I'd like to start off with recognition of.
As the High School Teacher of the Year from Blue Ridge, and that is Sarah Bromke. Is she here?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And Sarah gets a plaque and a check for $150.
Oh, gosh.
Cash it quick.
Okay.
And she also was the winner at our District Six, and this should be something.
There, Ed. Wait just a minute.
And I said District Six.
District Six. Thank you very much.
They want to get a picture.
Okay, congratulations, Sarah.
Thank you. Job well done.
Okay, then we'll move on right into item D2, which is the presentation of awards for the Voice of Democracy audio essays.
Okay. We have, let's see. First, I got the judges, if I may, that we use for Voice of Democracy. We have Kristy Saltkov, is that how you say that? I'm sorry. Ah, we come up, we have a... So everybody knows she's the town clerk. Then we have Mackenzie, ooh, Valid.
Polishna.
She's not here anyhow, good. But anyhow, all right, but then we have Lynn Kingbaum?
Craig Bond, she's not here.
Okay.
Right, but she was one of the judges when she was still on the council.
And I don't think a lot of her.
And then lastly, we have, lastly, we have Alana Jackson.
She's not here.
Was another judge. Okay, then we have the presentation of awards for Voice of Democracy, which is an essay contest, and again, they're from Blue Ridge High School. We have third place is Audrey Woods. She gets a certificate and a check for $75.
We had Murphy's Law involved with the certificates for third and second place.
For second place, Voice of Democracy, we have Elliot Woods. And again, a certificate and a check for $100. In first place is Jackson Woods. And a certificate and a check for $125. Yeah, I was just going to throw something in there. There must be something in the water over at the Woods family. And also, we have for Jackson, while he's up here, he took second at our district, so he gets another plaque and then another check for a hundred bucks this time. And now we'll go into the public service and safety.
We'll go right ahead. Thank you.
We have law enforcement is Officer Eduardo Benia from the Town of Pinetop Lakeside Police Department.
Can you stay up here so we can get a picture with everybody, please?
Sure. They want you to hang out.
Hang out. Thank you, Eduardo.
From the Navajo County Sheriff's Office, we have Deputy Cooper Stubblefield. We then have detention Deputy Kirby, I'm sorry on this.
Colleley.
Colleley, and from the Navajo County Sheriff's Department.
Thank you.
Then we have Carla Biosteros.
Biosteros.
Public Safety Tele...
Telecommunicator.
Thank you. From the Navajo County. And also, while she's standing here, she also won state for her job here in town, and that means that she also will go up the competition nationally. So, okay, where we at? Firefighter, we have Holly Keener. Is that close? From the Pinetop Fire Department. And paramedic is Garrett McLeod from the Pinetop Fire Department. Is that it? Cool. Okay.
I'd like to say something about our fire, our law enforcement and firefighters.
John, can you get over in front of the microphone, please? Thank you.
Same machine, huh? I'd like to say something about them. They're great people. If you just look at the fire in California, Pasadena, and Altadena, or whatever it was called, and what they did over there and that, those communities, and then the airline crash in DC, that they were, went down there and we lost 64, 67 people, and then we had the one in Philadelphia. So they're out there doing all the time across the nation, and we've got some great people in Navajo County and Pinetop Lakeside, and I, we really appreciate what they do for us because they do here in this country what we did overseas, defend our country. And so we really appreciate every one of them, and we thank you for your service to your country and the county and the town.
Very good.
Thank you.
You want us to?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd just like to thank the VFW for bringing all of that to us and these very well-deserved awards. Okay, we're going to move on. We need to take a timeout for a minute, I think. We'll just wait a minute.
February or March?
Okay, I think we can go ahead and move on then to our next item, which is D4, the Town of Pinetop Lakeside Proclamation of Black History Month, February 2025. Whereas Black History Month is an annual opportunity to recognize the central role of African-Americans in the history of our state and nation, and whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions of African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, social, and political development. And whereas the national commemoration of Black History in the United States dates back to 1926 and was initially observed the second week of February to coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. And whereas in the late 1960s, the week had evolved into Black History Month, thanks in part to the civil rights movement and a growing awareness of the experiences of African-Americans in our country. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. famously said, "I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." And whereas Black History Month was officially established in 1976 by President Gerald R. Ford, who called on the public to seize the opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history, and has since been recognized by every United States president. And whereas the Town of Pinetop Lakeside honors the significant contributions and advances made by African-Americans in our state, across our nation, and throughout the world in such areas as education, medicine, art, culture, public service, economic development, politics, and human rights. And whereas we see the greatness of America in those who have risen above injustice and enriched our society. Now, therefore, I, Stephanie Erwin, Mayor of the Town of Pinetop Lakeside, do hereby proclaim, "February 2025 is Black History Month in the Town of Pinetop Lakeside. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the Town of Pinetop Lakeside, Arizona, done the sixth day of February 2025." Thank you for that. We're going to rearrange our next two agenda items. We're going to have item D6 become item D5. So we are going to have a discussion and consideration of Resolution Number 25-1767, approving an increase of town council compensation for the performance of official duties. Keith, if you would present on that, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Traditionally, across the United States and the state of Arizona, council members receive a stipend for their service on town and city councils. Under Arizona Revised Statute, Section 9-232, point 01, the statute provides, "The common council may, by ordinance or resolution, prescribe a daily compensation or salary to be paid the mayor, councilman, and administrative board members for the performance of official duties." According to the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Publication, What All Elected Officials Need to Know, end of quote, it states, quote, "A council may not increase its own compensation; therefore, any approved salary increases do not take effect until after the next regular election." So essentially, council members cannot vote themselves an increase. The effective dates for the proposed town council stipends and increase will be as follows: For newly elected or re-elected council members during the 2026 election, the increase will be effective on December 1, 2026. For newly elected or re-elected council members during the 2028 election, the increase will be effective on December 1, 2028. Council stipends were last increased in January 1997, 27 years ago. An analysis of other similarly sized municipalities here in the White Mountains shows that our town council stipends are substantially lower in comparison. Several have recently been increased. In addition to attending council meetings twice each month, council members participate in work sessions, budget sessions, serve on boards, attend events, benefits for charities, and acts as liaisons for local boards and committees. Town of Pinetop Lakeside council members also spend time performing service within our community. For example, at the White Mountain Community Center, serving lunch to our senior citizens, anticipating an ADOT highway adopt-a-mile cleanups. I know, I've said this before in the past, that I believe with, for councils that I've worked with, this is one of the busiest and most active council in attending, and I didn't put in traveling to the state to meet with legislators, and this could be one of those years where we'll be doing a lot of that. So anyways, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. We do have one citizen who wishes to speak on this, Jim Snitzer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and members of the public. I'm Jim Snitzer. I live in Lakeside, and I'd like to speak in support of Resolution 25-1767, and I feel I'm in a uniquely good position to comment on this. The, until last November's election, I was on this council, so I know what the job entails. And I'm no longer on this council, so I have absolutely no conflict of interest speaking on this. The, I think of all the people on the council, I'm the most active volunteer in this town, and I, luckily, I'm in this age of computers, I put all of my activities on a calendar, which made it easy for me at the end of last year to report back to one of my organizations the time I spent with each organization. However, when it came to the council, because I was so active with all these other organizations, I believe I spent less time on council activities than any one councilman, any other council member. So I'm the lowest common denominator, and I was on the council for roughly 10 months, and when I did my calculation of hours in those little over 10 months, I spent 159 hours. And so that's the kind of commitment it takes, and I don't know that even, even you realize how many hours you spend, and certainly the public doesn't. So if you figure the amount of time that the council spends, I mean, you're being paid, I'm not sure it's even minimum wage anymore, probably not. I've never done, never done the math on this. So, so I think, I think a raise for the town council members is long overdue. I know from being on the council how, how hard everybody works to support this town, and I encourage the passage of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate your comments. I'm going to open up this up to council discussion. I will start by saying I know that we did put it in the budget for this year, but clearly we missed the timeframe to be able to do that. It should have been, this should have come before us a long time ago. I've spoken out against this because I know when I ran for council, I never expected to get paid. It was just my, my service back to the community. I, I prefer not to get a raise. I would rather put the money towards our employees or towards other things in the community. That's just my opinion, so I will open it up. Anybody else have any comments? Counselor Turner?
Last year, when we were putting the budget together for this year, I think everyone who was part of the budget process knows I was against it also. It's a privilege to sit here on this council and do the things that we're doing for this town at the best of our ability, and we're not doing it for money. And I'm against a raise. I think there are a lot of people out in our community that are not doing that well out there, and I just can't see for a volunteer like me, representing the people, to accept a raise or even support a raise for anyone here. It's a relatively small amount of money. I know there's a dollar mountain here of $37,000, but I think in actual fact, I didn't bring my numbers with me, but I think it's like an extra $8,000 or $9,000 out of our budget. It's not a question of the money, it's a question of the privilege and the optics of it, so.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I would very much support this. I think, and I agree with you, it's a privilege to serve on council. I don't know of any of us who do it for the money. But I do think, and while I've been on council, we try continually to keep our staff at least on the same par with all the other communities around as far as what they're getting, and in some cases, better than the surrounding communities. And I think it's appropriate to do that for the small stipend that goes to council as well. And again, it'll be almost 30 years by the time this will take effect because it won't take effect for another two years. And I think it's very appropriate to, to have an increase, and some of us will never see that, and that's fine. I still think, again, it's an appropriate thing to do, and it, and it is, I mean, it's bringing us up on the same par with the communities around us, who in most cases have made quite a bit more than we have over the last few years.
Counselor Heiser?
I, I'll share that I, I was opposed to this in the, in the study session when we discussed it there. I'm no less opposed to it today. I, I think the council does a very good job managing the town where it's at, but I think whenever a year when we're talking about whether or not we're going to give the town employees raises, I don't, I cannot support a place where we give ourselves a raise, and yet we haven't even discussed whether or not we're going to do that for our employees this year. I don't think it's a good use of money, and I, I for one was very surprised when I got on the council that I even got any money at all because that was not the point. I also feel like for all the things that the council does, we can get a staff vehicle, the town can pay for the fuel. I also agree that I put in a lot of hours with council, but I, I do that because I choose to, not because I'm mandated to. So I do special events I can attend, I can attend if I can't attend some, I don't, and other than that, I come to council meetings, and for the little stipend that we get right now, 250 a month, I feel like I get compensated pretty well for that. So that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? I would entertain a motion then if nobody else wants to speak.
I'll give you a motion.
Okay.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 25-1767, approving an increase in town council compensation for the performance of official duties to become effective on December 1, 2026 for council members elected during the 2026 election, and December 1, 2028 for council members elected during the 2028 election.
I'll save the motion.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? All those in, yes, go ahead.
I might just bring up, we did discuss this at a work meeting with the former council, and in fact, we came to a consensus in that meeting to move forward with it. And realistically, this should have been brought before that council, but anyway, it's being brought now. it's been brought now, so.
Okay. No further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Thank you. Motion fails. Thank you for bringing that to us. We'll move on to then our new item D6, which is a discussion and consideration of Resolution Number 25-1766, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Navajo County for provision of providing election services to the town of Pinetop Lakeside for a term of four years, expiring on January 1, 2029. Kristi.
Oh, good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, this IGA is for Navajo County to provide election services to the town, and I just wanted to give you a little bit of background of what Navajo County does in the election, and then what the town clerks department does in the election. So the town clerks are the election officials for the town. We do all of the postings, we send over the wording that needs to go on the ballot, and we work with the town council or the candidates. We do the campaign finance. What we cannot do, because we're not big enough to have the equipment, all of the small cities and towns in Arizona have their counties run for them. So what the counties can provide for us is voter registration, ballot preparation, they also mail it out, election day operations, election results, logic and accuracy testing. Town Attorney William Sims and I have reviewed the IGA, and we're happy with the outlined agreement. We have a great relationship with the Navajo County Elections Department, and I just ask that you guys approve this IGA for a term ending January of 2029.
Thank you, Kristi. Does anybody have any questions? I believe this is what we've done consistently for a number of years, so Counselor Heisler?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 25-1766, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between Navajo County and the town of Pinetop Lakeside for the provision of election services for the town of Pinetop Lakeside for a term of four years to expire on January 1, 2029.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, second, is there further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Kristi. We appreciate that. We'll move on then to item D7, which is discussion and consideration of Resolution Number 25-1768, approving and authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement between the town of Pinetop Lakeside and the Washburn Trust for the purchase of 2.08 plus or minus acres located at 141 West White Mountain Boulevard in Lakeside, Arizona. We do have an option for an executive session on this, but I'm going to go ahead and let Keith introduce it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. The town of Pinetop Lakeside has an opportunity to secure 2.08 plus or minus acres next to our town hall. Purchasing this property will preserve the aesthetics of the town hall and prevent businesses that may not be compatible in nature. It is an opportunity to be forward-looking so that this property can be used for future expansions of town hall or to address other needs in the community. The original owner of the town hall placed deed restrictions that limit who can develop or what type of business could be developed on that property, and it makes it difficult for the owner to sell, which it has been over the years, because it is very narrow. The deed restrictions allow the town to dictate what will be developed on the Washburn property. The deed restrictions on that property passed to the town when we purchased this property, and town's staff's recommendation is to move forward with completing this transaction.
Thank you, Keith. We have a couple of citizens who would like to speak on this. Jeff Sterns.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, staff, members of the public. So I read the CDR associated with this. It confuses me. As I see it, I don't see any justifiable business case or benefit to the town for this So let's go through it. Basically requesting the town to convert a liquid asset capital, cash, however you want to call it, to very much a non-liquid asset, real estate. The property would become, in my opinion, a liability and an expense to the town, because the town would have to have appropriate insurance on it, maintain it, I don't know how taxes work with the property, but there will be expenses associated with it. The town, as was pointed out, already possesses the potential position that we can limit development options. So when the statement is made that it provides the town the ability to limit the businesses that may be coming onto that property, well, we already have that, and at no expense. We're in an optimal position at this point in time, and there's no cost currently to the town for that position. So why convert actual liquid capital to something that has no return on investment associated with that capital? The only challenge that this resolution mitigates is to the seller. And frankly, that's their challenge, and they should have thought about that at the time the transaction took place. Why make the seller's problem the town's problem? There's no need for this whatsoever. And further, I really don't want the town in the commercial real estate business. I do feel very strongly about this. If it does pass this and the capital is spent, it's my opinion that this warrants an investigation into potential misuse of town capital. Mayor, I have one additional request, if I could. I'd like you to consider a roll call vote associated with this resolution. Thank you very much for your time and listening to me.
Thank you for your comments, Jeff. Larry McCormick.
Madam Mayor, I specifically asked after the presentation, because the general public knows very little about the proposal, so.
That was, Keith presented the agenda item.
That was the presentation, okay. Well, I guess, my name is Larry McCormick, as everybody probably knows, I live in the county, and it seems recently that the last two proposed transactions, one a planning and zoning, and one a council, have brought about a new way of doing business, and that is to work on a project for a year and a half, and then with weeks' notice, it hits the agenda, and it's voted on. No time for public input, very little time for public input, as the gentleman before me did, and I was pleased to hear that, by the way. So in any case, it just bothers me that we don't have, you know, don't seem to care about public input, and it doesn't seem to, they're not given an opportunity, even if, I don't know what the mailing list, email list looks like when the agendas go out, so even fewer people are seeing it, and obviously, fewer people attend our meetings. So it's certainly not illegal to do this, but it certainly smacks of politics in my eyes. My personal opinion is that we should all be given proper notice and time to have our opinions heard, and there's been, I don't think I've heard any numbers. I saw that Dr. Washburn had the property listed at like $395,000, and I heard a rumor, right or wrong, that the sales price is like around $320,000. Certainly, that's a lot of money to keep people from wanting to build a business that doesn't fit the city's liking. So, you know, and that was accomplished quite well with the Dollar Store, whatever it was, Dollar General. Restrictions were put on the purchase, and they backed out. Didn't have to spend $370,000 approximately to get that accomplished. So, I mean, there's a lot of things in town. I remember attending a meeting on Forest Lane a few years ago. I sat next to Keith, and they were concerned about the traffic flow coming from Woodland Lake. It was, they were using a shortcut through Forest Lane, a rather sleepy little street about two blocks long, and they wanted to do certain things to derail the traffic. And the main thing was to get a stoplight on probably one of the worst intersections in town. And the response from city manager was, I'm not naming specifically Keith, was, "We don't have the money." Now we got the money, where's it better spent, serving a large portion of the community or to save a bit, you know, two acres, not save it, but control it for however long deemed necessary? So anyway, that's what I got for you tonight.
Thank you for your comments, Larry. Any comments from the council?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Stipulated a couple of things.
Yes.
I won't address Larry's comment about Woodland Lake Road. I mean, well, maybe I will. So a warrant study was done on that intersection, and the ADOT would not put a light there. So it's not just about money. ADOT would not put a light there, so sorry about that. An appraisal, I didn't put that in. Here it is in the contract, will be performed if this property does not appraise for this amount of money, then we back out of the contract, so.
Okay. And I think initially, the asking price.
$500,000.
I was going to say was $498, roughly in there, so yes, so the asking price has come down. You know, I understand the comments that were made, but I do think this is kind of a forward-looking move on part of the council to have room for expansion should we need it, or maybe some other opportunities will arise. So I think it's a good investment for the community. So I will open it up for any council members to speak, or I would entertain a motion. Counselor Heisler?
I just wanted to say that I also think it's a good investment. There are many cities and towns that are buying commercial property, they're looking for growth opportunity. This is right next to our town hall. It makes a lot of sense to purchase this piece of property for future growth of the town, and I think that we're getting off in the weeds about whatever else we might say we're trying to do with this piece of property, but I think it's a good purchase for the town. I do think it's a good investment. I've seen nothing but real estate prices go up, up here in the community, so by purchasing this property, if ever we were to need to, we could sell that property if we so chose. And so I too am in support of purchasing the property. I think there's examples of commercial property being purchased by cities and towns all over the state, including our neighbors right here in the White Mountains, who are either trying to improve a community or build their downtown area the way they want it to be built, and that requires some investment from the government and the taxpayers to make those things happen. And I think that if we wanted to go back and focus on the business that used to be on this property, there was a lot of contention within the town about what was going to go there, and it was, I mean, it didn't go for whatever reason, but what's to say the next one won't, if you wanted to focus on that. But I think this is a very good purchase, and it is something we can get a return on investment on if we chose down the road that we needed to sell it, and I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Let me just have a comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think it would be very prudent of us to plan for the future. When we bought this building, that land was for sale, and a couple of us on council were, have a background in commercial real estate. I suggested that we make an offer on that parcel before it was disclosed that we were going to buy this one. And it turns out that now we're finally given the opportunity to buy that property. We gave up a great opportunity to move our court to this building or another building because we didn't have the room or the parking to do that, so we ended up with a court that is separated. And I think it would have been really good if we, at that time, could have moved our court to this facility or an adjacent facility. So I think there's a lot of potential use for that property for the town as we go forward, and nobody can predict, you know, how big we'll be in 30 or 40 years, but at my age, that's not a long time. 30 or 40 years is an eye blink, and so we'll need that ground in the future, so I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, did you want to say something?
I do, but I think there's some other hands, too.
There are one.
Counselor Turner, yes.
I think the price of this property is, makes it a good deal, but I step back and think about the financials. Earlier, there was conversation about the potential for a million dollars going out of our budget, depending on how the legislature helps us with the sales tax revenue on food. If that goes away, there's a million dollars gone. Now, that potentially could be a next budget year, but if I look at the money that the town has, you know, do I want to spend $350,000 here or kind of cushion a blow for that potential? We got the possible acquisition of the gift of the 400 acres at the park, and there's going to be money required to maintain that property. I think my memory is telling me that it's going to take a hundred grand a year from Public Works to maintain it, maybe a little bit off there, but still, that's money that currently isn't budgeted for next year. I've talked to Keith and Kevin a week ago about the analysis of our police officers' pay relative to other towns and counties around, and I hope we can analyze that in preparation for next budget year, but there's potential for money to be budgeted for that. I've heard Public Works talk that they have concerns about hanging on to employees who are offered more money elsewhere, and I didn't retain all the detail that Public Works was talking about a couple of months ago, but again, that's a potential plus to the budget. I-260, we're still talking about that from a safety standpoint, speed control, and I know that's an ADOT responsibility, but if we are going to control the speed there, if we are going to put crosswalks there, if we have a compromise with ADOT on a traffic light at Larry's favorite corner there, there might be some monies needed to power that light. We don't know yet. And then there's the waste program we talked about earlier. If I step back and think about all those things, is this the right place to spend $350,000, even though it might be a great deal? I've got those concerns.
I would just like to clarify one thing you mentioned. The legislature doesn't help us with the sales tax.
I know, I was being sarcastic.
That's a tax that they're trying to take away from us, so.
We're going to lose a million.
I just want to clarify that, yeah.
Thanks.
So Counselor Frono?
So I am in favor of the purchase of the property, and, you know, we, as far as I understand, our town holds the cards to the deed restrictions. That's been one of the major hurdles to that property selling. From a value perspective, if we can change those deed restrictions, well, actually, we could do it now, but, you know, so that if we release those deed restrictions, change on, we add value to that property, potentially making it a very profitable acquisition. And then the other thing that I just kind of read was that there was a finding of a well on the property, or unknown condition, but I do think of the central location of the town and the potential for that well to produce water, fire department going across the street, the forest behind us in all directions, I mean, if we had water storage there or the ability to. I mean, if we had water storage there or the ability to add water to any of our infrastructure, I see that as a, a great value that's sitting there, too. Who knows what it would cost to resurrect that well, but, but it's there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
I, generally, I oppose this kind of a thing. I mean, if we don't have a particular purpose for the property, what are we doing in the real estate business as a town? But I, I think, I mean, I am, I'm now in support of it. I mean, I, I feel like it is, will be an asset for the town to have this, and will give us opportunity to expand if need be, or to put something else there for the community. So even though I, it is a lot of money, and I had some reservations about it at this point, I, I am for us purchasing this property.
Thank you. And entertain a motion then? Counselor Heisler?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 25-1768 approving and authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement between the town of Pintop Lakeside, Lakeside, and the Washburn Trust for the purchase of 2.08 plus or minus acres located at 141 West White Mountain Boulevard.
I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion of seconds or further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Thank you. That carries six to one. Okay, thank you, council. I see that we have no further discussion, no further items on our agenda tonight, so we are adjourned. Thank you.